We, the Bangla people, welcome you to our country. We are the lawful inhabitants of this peninsula for thousands of generations. We are part of this land on which we stand, part of the waters that flow in and around. We are part of the dreaming stories that are connected. The full awareness of oneness with the land and waters will ensure a future for the children of tomorrow. Ngariya, Wunaguru Bangala Miriya, Yuradamelbu. Thank you.
Thank you everyone, welcome to our meeting tonight, at least you're in from the cold. In presenting our oath to our city, we, the Wala Council members, commit to serving the community of which we are a part and will work together diligently and collaboratively to create a prosperous future in which we all can share. Arabiterie notices for the night. Acknowledge the passing of Brian Turner, Gary Stuckley, Edith Lavery, Henry Jewett, Barbara Bolt, Annabella McFay, Brenton Brolin, Robin Hartwell, Dorinka Lobrevic, Jackie Ernestvi, Laurel Niebone and John Fuller. I just ask you to remain standing for a moment, silence in respect. Thank you. We have apologies tonight from Council of Clubica. We have two other members that are on their way. Item five, council member and executive declarations, 5.1, does anybody have a conflict of interest they need to declare? Thank you. Any gifts and benefits to declare? Thank you. Item six, the minutes of the previous council meeting, 6.1, confirmation of the minutes of the previous ordinary council meeting held on Monday 20th of May. Councilor Knox moving and councillor Westerman seconding?
Yes.
I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carry. Thank you. 6.2, confirmation of the minutes of the special council meeting held on Monday 27th of May. Somebody care to move that? Councillor Simpson, you're moving, correct? And Deputy Mayor Pond, you're seconding?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carry. Thank you. Item seven, matters adjourned or laid on the table, 7.1, the CEO vehicle replacement. That item has since been dealt with. They're moving on. I'll just take advice, we just move on, don't we, Director? Yes, thank you. Item eight, deputations, we have none. Petitions, item nine, we have none. Item 10, public question time? We have none. Item 11, council member activities. Quite a list there, if anybody would like to speak to any of those or others, I'll give you a moment. I always thought that the last council was a very active council, but this one seems to be raising the bar even further. Well, thank you. All right, thank you for those. Item 12, presentations, we have none. Item 13, committee reports, 13.1, corporate services. 13.1.1, the audit and risk committee meeting minutes of the 13th of May. Councillor Knox?
I'm happy to move it, but I'd like to make a comment as well. Page 35, which troubles me a bit, we need to consider the sale of assets, reduction in services, increased income, debt reduction strategies and controlling costs as a matter of urgency. We should not lose sight of that.
Certainly, thank you councillor. You're moving, do I have a seconder? Councillor Simpson? We have a motion, move, seconder. Okay, so I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carry. Thank you. Item 14, reports from council offices, 14.1, the office of the chief executive, his ordinary report, 14.1.1, chief CEO's action report. You have it there, we'll take it and it's read. If you have any questions, I'm sure the CEO will be happy to answer them. Any comments or questions? Councillor Simpson?
Question, you had a meeting with E Hughes regarding the sporting hub. I would have thought the amount of times we spoke of that, we would have some report either by writing or by group or by now.
Through, through the mayor, thank you for the question councillor Simpson. The discussion with our state member was around the $6 million election commitment for a new sport and rec hub cited on this premise. The scope of that work is still being determined by the Department of Rec and Sport in conjunction with the local state member. Department of Rec and Sport have undertaken to do some costings of the various elements that were included in the election or in, wasn't actually an election commitment, but in statements that have been made in terms of what the $6 million will be spent on. And probably not surprisingly, the cost of the works is in excess of $6 million. So at this point in time, the scope of works is still being discussed and agreed at the state level before we can have further conversation about what role or council may play in terms of that election commitment.
Councillor Knox?
I've just got to get what I was going to want.
If there are no further questions of the CEO, we have a recommendation, would somebody care to move? I think we'll see the notes of his action report. Move councillor Simpson?
I think I'll second him, Deputy Mayor Pond.
All right, move Deputy Mayor Pond. Seconded councillor Simpson, I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carry. Thank you. And I have just realised I went over, I missed item 13.1, the corporate services audit and risk committee meeting minutes. Oh, did I? Do I get the sack yet? Thank you. I told you Saturday I'm vulnerable. Item 14.2, corporate services ordinary reports, 14.2.1, the monthly budget report. We have a report, does anybody have any, we'll take it as read, any questions or comments? We will refer them as appropriate. Councillor Knox?
I've got a question on page 67 where it refers to consultants, in particular the economic development advisor and asset management, and I'm wondering how much we're paying for those and what in fact they are doing.
Yes, my first manager?
So the economic development consultancy has stopped now, so that there was a bit of a crossover between the end of the contract for that and the us rejoining the RDA. So there was some work done early in the financial year, but that has ceased now, but it's obviously picked up in the actuals for the year. Asset management has to do with our, there's two bits to that, we sort of get some ongoing support from a contractor to do with when we get traffic assessments come through, certain questions from the public need traffic assessments, that sort of thing. So we have a budget of about $20,000 a year to undertake those types of work. And then each, well basically four out of every five years, we need to get a detailed assessment of one of our major asset classes undertaken. And we normally budget about $100,000 per year because it's quite a large undertaking. So this year we're undertaking stormwater, the stormwater asset class. Last year we did transport and next year we'll do buildings and structures.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? In that case, we do have a report in front of us with a recommendation that council receives and notes the monthly budget report. Would somebody care to move that recommendation? Councillor Border moving? Seconder please. Councillor Inglis, I'll put the motion, thank you, those in favour, against, carry. Thank you. Item 14.2.2, the 24-25 annual business plan and budget adoption and rate declaration. Do you have any comments or questions to direct to the person that can answer everything? Councillor Border?
Just a comment really, having gone through this a second time, just the thoroughness and the level of detail and the, I mean, the community have always asked for transparency and openness and from sitting on this side of the, in the gallery, it's just wonderful to see. I think it's really great that we've been so transparent, that we've been so open, that there've been so many opportunities and methods for the community to give that feedback, whether they've taken the opportunities, is of course up to them, but I just wanted to make that comment and thank all the staff for the huge effort that it's been balancing and walking a tightrope financially, I think they've done a great job.
Appreciate that, thank you councillor. Councillor Knox?
More of a statement than a question, but I recognise that we do have some local financial issues in the community that we need to deal with. I personally believe, and I thought I'd never say this, that 5% is too low when you consider that we're going to have a deficit of 1.491 million and when you consider that we're actually gambling on things that to happen that we feel fairly confident about, but there is no ultimate guarantee in those things. But that said, I just think 5% is too low, but I'm not going to rock the boat.
Thank you councillor. Any further comments or questions?
If I can just make one.
Yes, certainly.
You will have noticed in the agenda that some of the recommendations had some yellow highlighting. Obviously council need to adopt the most up-to-date valuations that are available and they get issued every Saturday morning. So as you work through the recommendations, there are a few items that are still left highlighted, there are items that have changed slightly. There was only a pretty insignificant change in evaluations that came through this morning from the weekend, from last week. So yeah, they'll be highlighted in yellow. There are 16 recommendations and I think they all need to be adopted separately.
Yes, we do have to do each one separately.
Yeah, so the only, the items that changed, the total ratable value of the property changed by about half a million dollars, which when you look at the total values, $7 billion is quite insignificant. And then when you get down into the rates in the dollar, some of them changed by 0.0001 of a decimal place.
Thank you. Right, recommendation one, would somebody care to move? And second, recommendation one please. Move councillor Simpson, seconded councillor Inglis, I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carry. Thank you. Recommendation two. We have somebody to move recommendation two, councillor Westerman, seconded councillor Todd. Put the motion, those in favour, against, carry. Thank you. Recommendation three. Do I have a mover please? Move councillor Border, seconded councillor Knox, those in favour, against, carry. Thank you. Recommendation four. Right.
As noted, they are very minor changes from what was published in the agenda.
Yes, recommendation four, councillor Simpson moved, deputy mayor Pond seconded. Put the motion, those in favour, against, carry. Thank you. Recommendation five, the fixed charge. Just, that's only three lines. Would somebody care to move? Councillor Westerman, seconded councillor Border, I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carry. Thank you. Recommendation six, the rate cap for primary residents. We have a recommendation. Move councillor Border, seconded deputy mayor Pond, put the motion, those in favour, against, carry. Thank you. Recommendation seven, the declaration of the separate rates, the regional landscape levy. As we will again always point out, that is collected on behalf of the government, not ours. Move councillor Simpson? No. Right question?
No.
Oh, sorry.
I'm happy to move it. Who has obviously got the magic machine tonight?
Yes, he must have.
It's pinch mine, I think. But I think we need to make it clear to people because they don't get it, that we are not collecting that from us. That is a state government tax. We need to be clear about that.
Certainly, we will continue that. Right, move councillor Knox, seconded councillor Simpson, those in favour? Against, carry. Thank you. Recommendation eight, the declaration of service charges. Would somebody care to move that recommendation? Move councillor Knox, seconded councillor Inglis, put the motion, those in favour, against, carry. Thank you. Recommendation nine. Rating policy, council adopt the rating policy. Right then. Move, now, which order they came in, we'll see. Councillor Border moved, councillor Todd seconded. Put the motion, those in favour, against, carry. Thank you. Recommendation 10, rate rebates. Move councillor Todd, seconded councillor Border. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carry. Thank you. Recommendation 11, the rate cap. Now they all appeared and now some have disappeared, so I'll go for the two that are here. Move councillor Border, seconded councillor Knox. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carry. Thank you. And recommendation 12, waste management, remission of service charges. Move councillor Knox?
No, I didn't, sorry.
All right, sorry, move councillor Westerman, seconded councillor Border. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carry. Thank you. Recommendation 13, payment of rates. Move councillor Knox, seconded councillor Inglis, put the motion, those in favour, against, carry. Thank you. And recommendation 14, loan borrowings. Move councillor Border, seconded councillor Westerman, put the motion, those in favour, against, carry. Thank you very much. Recommendation 15. Referring to the LTFP. Move councillor Knox, seconded councillor Todd, put the motion, those in favour, against, carry. Thank you. Recommendation 16. Summary of the 24-25 annual business plan. Move deputy mayor Pond, seconded councillor Campbell, put the motion, those in favour, against, carry. Thank you. Right. Thank you very much. Thank you councillor. Right. Item 14.2.3, the location of flag poles within the city. You may recall that this was agreed to earlier in the year that a report would come back to council regarding the future of our flag poles. We have a recommendation there. You're moving it all, question councillor? Move councillor Knox, councillor Campbell, you're seconding it?
I have a question.
Question?
I did bring it up then, I believe. Has there been any further consideration to having the Aboriginal flag at Memorial Oval with those flags? Last time I attended Nansack service, there was comments made by the public that there was not one there and it was actually the 100 year anniversary that year for the Aboriginal people that served in the war. I was just wondering if we'd had a look at that or not yet.
Councillor, I can answer that. In regards to this approach, I'm not saying it's not going to happen, but that's the next lot of flags that we're looking at replacing. So if that's the wish of the council, then I'll look into a third flag pole, in that area.
Yes, I was probably remiss in not pointing out that this recommendation relates to the installation of five flag poles at Wilson Park. Yes, I think there are others still to be looked at, so my error there, I should have drawn that to your attention. So we've got a motion by councillor Simpson, seconded.
No, I have a question, no motion, sorry. My question, these are theft proofed?
Councillor, there is theft proofed is the ones that we've placed up, so they're going to be almost identical except for height because we want obviously the amenity to look nice where it's going to be and they're going to be solar lights as well. So they're identical with the ones that we have at the front from the same company.
I've got a comment too. Yep. And whilst I understand the connections with the Aboriginal flag etcetera, I would like to point out that those that fought, fought under the Australian flag or maybe the British flag and back in those days, the Aboriginal flag, so far as I know, did not exist.
Thank you councillor, councillor, deputy mayor Pond?
Deciding.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion moved by councillor Knox, seconded by deputy mayor Pond. There's no further discussion. Thank you for your comments. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carry. Thank you. Item 14.3, city growth ordinary reports, 14.3.1, the Adelaide Croes community camp proposal involving Spencer Gulf cities. You have a report there, is there any questions?
I have a question. And even though I despise them, I'm happy to support this because I think it's a good thing. But on page 222, it talks about accommodating the touring party. Now, I couldn't get a sense of whether the money we're paying actually covers those costs or whether we paid additional money to accommodate the touring party.
I can take that question, I believe it's all covered in the $50,000.
That's the case, I'm happy.
Yes. Now, all the names that have popped up, are we moving and seconding or have you got questions?
There's good questions.
Right, questions councillor Inglis?
I just find the timing strange because football season finishes at the end of September and the AFL players go off in a six-week break, so how are they going to be here on October? Are we all in the holidays or is it the AFLW team is coming?
Well, they would be.
They get a, they're in their EBA, they get a six to eight week break at the end of the footy season. I might not be trying to crap and I'll get knocked out in my final forms, that probably answers my question.
My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, because this is a camp, it's not part of the season?
Yeah, but the players get time off, they're gone.
All I know is the other days that they've given us.
I was just curious at the dates.
Yeah, they've nominated the dates.
Yeah, I was just curious because, you know, like I said, they get a six to eight week, it's in their EBA, they're gone. Yeah, anyhow.
Councillor Border?
I was seconding it, deputy mayor Pond.
I had my light on first as a Croes supporter, I was very happy to move that.
You must have the dodgy one because you keep coming up on the bottom of the list.
David's got to move a motion.
All right, move deputy mayor Pond, seconded councillor Knox.
Border.
At Border, sorry. Those in favour, put the motion, those in favour, against, carry. Thank you. Now, that has been, just a little bit of background, that did come up to Spencer Gulf cities a while ago and it was a decision of the three mayors who form the board there that it had to go back to the elected body and it wasn't going to be our recommendations. Item 14.3.2, the draft event strategy. Do I have any questions or comments? Otherwise councillor Border?
Comment and then moving, just again, it looks like a huge amount of work and based on recent experiences at the events, just batting above their average, the events team doing a great job.
Thank you councillor, yes, definitely. So you're moving that?
Yes, please.
Councillor Westman, you're seconding?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Any further questions or comments? You have very detailed reports, thank you. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carry. Thank you. Item 14.3.3, community grants. We have a recommendation there. Somebody care to move it or comments first?
I've got a couple of questions. The first one is the mower that Wanderers are going to buy. Could we explore whether that could be shared with the other soccer clubs? Quite an expensive piece of kit. What I asked was that in regard to the Wanderers Soccer Club mower, could that mower be shared amongst the other soccer clubs?
It possibly could be. I suppose we are assessing the grant on the information that we got. But yeah, we could actually give that feedback to them and if you saw their last mower lasted well beyond its life or I think about over 15 years.
And that second one isn't related to the junior soccer, is it just the $5,000?
It is $5,000.
It's a bit contradictory, it does talk about an amount of $8,600 sponsorship from council too. So I assume it's just the $5,000, but I thought I should just clarify that.
Yep, as per the, I suppose the information that we received, it is seeking just the $5,000.
Just as a last comment, I'm delighted that we're getting the financials included with the reports.
The view of councillor Knox's question there. Just one aspect that would need to be taken into account is to whether if it was a pulled mower, whether they've got the ability to transfer, transport it around town. Can I make a comment on that too? Have to change the motion.
I think the one that they've got lasted 15 years because they look after it. If they share that, it wouldn't be looked after.
Yeah. Are you all moving a second or questions?
I've got a question.
Yeah, please, you've got the question. Councillor Border?
And yep, so the $5,000 each, just looking at the amount that we have allocated in the budget for that and that we're halfway through.
Um, and yep, so, uh, the five thousand each, just looking at the amount that we have allocated in the budget for that and that we're halfway through the year. I would love to give five grand to both of them. Um, there's no doubt about that, I want to support those, both of those initiatives. But I'm just wondering about any discussion, are we leaving enough for later in the year? Um, yeah, just wanted to pose that question. I want to support them, but is full five thousand for both of these? Where we want to put it?
Just noting that it's by financial year, so this is the last chance to.
Thank you, that answers my question exactly.
Just kind of moving that out. Councillor Ca-, uh, councillor Campbell.
Um, I just wanted to, um, put to the, the council that asking them to share something like that, I don't think would be received well. And there's reason for that, like, um, councillor Simpson said, um, it probably lasted that long because they took good care of it and lending it to other clubs would be a risk for them. Uh, ride on lawnmowers cost more than five thousand dollars, so I would suggest that that own club would be putting some money into it as well and they would be giving, once again, their investment to another club in the hope that they would take care of it. So I think that's, I, I personally feel that's unfair to ask that of them.
I think the re, report does indicate that the total cost is close to ten thousand anyhow. Any mayor Pond?
Um, my comment was around the junior soccer, I'm happy to, for the first one, um, because it's definitely an asset that's needed and they do look after it. Well, I don't know if I'm reading the application wrong, but actually it was like they didn't need it and they're going to make quite a bit of a profit. But being it's the end of the financial year, um, I suppose helping out community groups. Okay, helps everybody, but just the way I read it, it, it looked like they actually didn't even need the money.
Thank you deputy.
I was just checking that, and that's one of the, you know, the things for us to, that's why it comes to the chamber for that conversation. Um, with, with that event, it does bring a lot to the region also, so, um, yeah, I think we'll take that.
Councillor Todd.
So just, um, I didn't declare a conflict of interest because I don't believe there is a conflict of interest, but just for the benefit of the chamber. I am a life member of Wanderers, but I'm an inactive member of the club. Um, yeah.
Thank you. All right, I've lost track of it. Uh, councillor Border.
Happy to move.
You're moving. Councillor English.
Happy to second.
Moved and seconded. There are no further comments, I'll put the motion, those in favour? Against? Carrie, thank you. Item fourteen point four, fourteen point four point one, Porshaw Toilet Renewal Works. Update June report. We have a report in front of us, this is before I call for recommendations, any questions or comments which can be referred to the appropriate officer councillor Knox.
I'm sorry about this, but I did manage to find time to read the four hundred and eighty, eighty page agenda yesterday, so only appropriate, I get to ask a few. Um, has the amount of seven hundred and sixty thousand been included in the budget is the first part? Or does it increase the deficit? I recognise it says it's drawing it down from other funding from toilets, that's the, that's the first part of the question.
So this report is, so basically we, the total amount available listed in the report is what was available for four toilet renewals over, um, three financial years. So this, um, completing this toilet still leaves the, the amount, sorry, and I'll have to, didn't have that figure right in front of me, but, um, so it still leaves, um, approximately, I believe, about five hundred thousand, I'll pull up the figure. For the, for the three remaining toilets and then further reports will be more made to council about the priorities for, as, as the report discusses, the wetlands potentially being the next priority toilet, um, ahead of potentially Civic and, um, uh, and Wilson. But yeah, so the Porshaw has been prioritised and was budgeted in the twenty-two, twenty-three year. It's just that the total cost of, as we find.
So carry that forward.
Yes, it's all, all available in the budget, yes, no?
Okay, the next part of the question is, I couldn't get a sense of who is the contractor builder? And I recognise that we built a toilet block not so long ago out in Norton Park. And we've got problems there, we can't buy a door to match the, the size of the door frame. Um, so, um, my question is, why can't we just buy off the shelf? Um, other places do it, I mean, I was recently in Seacliff. And they had an off the shelf, um, port block there, looked very attractive with a, um, one of those, uh, wraparounds on the outside of it. And you even see them in Paris as well, so, and in London.
I'm happy to answer in the first instance and then Jade may have something she wants to add. Um, so it, it is in theory an off the shelf, um, product. A lot of the costs actually involve around the, um, installation of services, uh, as we find when we touch most of our infrastructure. Um, services become an issue, so that's where a lot of the costs sit. So it is certainly a product, um, that's off, off shelf with obviously the addition of vinyls, um, and that sort of thing. Um, yeah, and with the, the contractor, so, uh, it's a different contractor to the one from Norton Park. And as council may remember, the contractor we're using is the contractor that was going to do some work on the northern coastline for us, um, obviously with the, the, um, uh, bill you worked that, uh, we haven't yet secured. Um, and a change to that contract was that they would undertake toilet renewals for us. Um, and their pricing has been checked against, the pricing.
Anything further councillor? Yep. Any further questions? You're moving councillor Border, we have a mover, would somebody care to second that councillor Todd? I'll put the motion, those in favour? Against? Carrie, thank you. Item fourteen point four point two, the Wildemount Laura landfill site closure and post-closure plan, very lengthy report there. Does anybody have any questions or comments and I will refer them, councillor Knox?
Um, I've got two. Uh, the first question is if we're going to still continue using the asbestos cell, does council get any revenue from the use of that asbestos cell?
I'm happy to answer, yes, we charge, um, a, a rate for asbestos, not, not above the average in the state. Asbestos, taking of asbestos is an expensive, um, um, thing, uh, at most landfill sites. Um, and so when we look at building a new cell, we'll bring a separate business case back to look at the, you know, the upfront cost of digging the cell compared to the, the expected revenue over the life of the cell.
The second part is, um, we're going to take the spoil to cap, to cap it from Racecourse Road. Does that mean that we're going to do some digging in the Racecourse Road area or are we going to use something that's stockpiled there already?
Uh, I can answer that councillor, so we have a lot of, um, material stockpiled at the ASR site on Racecourse Road that we need to remove when you clear that site. So that's what we're going to be repurposing that, um, material that's there.
And that, will that be enough to cap?
Um, potentially, plus we've got another, another contract coming in with about eight thousand tonnes of clear waste if we can improve, um, sort that out with the hydrogen projects. So there's, there's consistently, um, fill coming in, plus Biolia has a whole lot of fills, so I'm confident.
We've got fourteen thousand tonnes, we're very happy to donate to anybody who wants it.
I'm confident we have enough to, to cover the site councillor.
Thank you. Thank you councillor, councillor Simpson.
With, after reading that report, they mention the EPA quite often. After our, our problem with the, each end, are the EPA coming to see us or are we working on documentation?
Uh, thank you, um, through the mayor, working on documentation in relation to this closure plan. They've actually, uh, reviewed it in detail, they haven't been to the site to look at it, but they do regularly come to the site for inspection purposes under our EPA licence.
Very happy the fact that what we're doing is going to meet their requirements in six months' time, not get brutal.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you councillor. Uh, deputy mayor Pond.
Just a quick comment, um, good to see that we've got a solar pump now for the Leachate and it doesn't have to be done manually. Um, I think that was an amazing move and I'm happy to pass this.
Right, so a move by deputy mayor Pond, I have a seconded, councillor Border. Seconded councillor Border, so we have a motion, I'll put the motion, those in favour? Against? Thank you, and certainly commend the detail and length of that report. Item fifteen, information decision reports, fifteen point one, council members, fifteen point one point one, uh, the mayor's list of engagements. Just a couple of, I'd like to just add a, a little bit to, I am trying to, any meeting I'm involved in, try to make notes to refer back to you in this. But you will notice that every Tuesday at five thirty, there's a informal ad hoc meeting of mayors on Air Peninsula. There might be four of us that, uh, log on, there might be half a dozen. But just to give you a bit of an idea, there is never an agenda and it's just a general discussion, if I look at last week, between the six of us that were linked in, there was general discussion about the national conference coming up in Canberra. Quite a bit of discussion from a lot of the smaller councils about their sustainability and the problem of getting sufficient income as against the expenditure to provide services. And then the community don't want the race to go up too high. Uh, some observations, now these may be perceptions that's suggesting that South Australia has problems competing with the eastern states for getting federal government funding. That seems to be, uh, a similar topic across most of the, the mayors. Also touched on behaviour issues of the youth and some of the problems. So it's not just Wyla when we hear that, but several of the other mayors, so there's just general discussion uh, about all the issues. Port Lincoln and the lower part of Air Peninsula are very much concerned at the moment about lack of, uh, potable water and how long the diesel plants are going to take. And the suggestion, as you've probably seen in media, some of the stories that they'll run out of potable drinking water within two years. Uh, also a general feeling from, I think, all six, or all five of the mayors, that their last one, that there needs to be, uh, regionally uh, waste recycling education about what should go in what bin, which we've been talking about. But we're not orphans there, so some general thoughts there. And I think that will also be looked at by the EPLGA as to how they can get involved. Uh, and housing, housing problems in most of the regional areas. So it's just a mixed bag of some of the things that get discussed. And obviously if there's things there on a, across all the mayors discussion, EPLGA can get more involved. Or if it's pertinent to us, I can bring back to you. So that's just a bit of an idea of the sorts of things that get talked out in a thirty, forty-five minute setup. Uh, the CEO has already addressed the outcome of the meetings with Eddie Hughes, which I was going to touch on, but don't need to now. I would like to very much commend the council teams and everybody, whether they're on a team or just on a single roll with the Salty Siesta Festival. Now, I stayed there for the full length of it, yes, they will be having a debrief. Now, I do know one of the, the comments around town, not enough food. I know for a fact that they went out their way to try to attract as many food supplies as possible. So that's just something they'll have to look at. But, and it was cold that night, but when those lights went, when the sun went down and the lights came on and those fantastic inflated cuttlefish whales and crabs, I really commend everybody that put an effort into that. It really, they've lifted the bar, so they've got a problem in the future. I think the entertainment was exceptionally popular, uh, the, the fire, yeah, really great. So I commend everyone there. And, uh, there will be more that will come out over the next week or so about the, uh, state dinner with her excellency down in Adelaide last week. Uh, we've had exception, we've had an actual, uh, bit of a debrief this afternoon as to where to from now. I've got a number of personal notes to send off to the governor, premier, other ministers. Uh, there will be an invitation soon for those that were there to come back here, another bigger, broader debrief, debriefing as to where we can move forward and how we move forward from a lot of the contacts that were made. Uh, as the governor said, I didn't realise it, but yes, she convened this. But it's the first time we were told by the governor that, her excellency, that this is the first time a regional city has actually had a state dinner held for them at Government House. Uh, so I think we've got a lot that's going to come out of this. Uh, and certainly has put Wyla, Wylle in the focus there. Uh, but yeah, as I said, there would be more that would come out of it, uh, yeah. We were flavour of the month, that's for sure. So that's, that's all I've got to say on my report. Uh, deputy mayor Pond.
Just a quick comment, after looking at the mayor's list of engagements, I've noticed that I've left two off my list. Um, we attended afternoon tea with Sandhya Gupta on the twenty-sixth of May, so hoping I could get that added to my list. Um, and also I've got to put down the, um, Salty Siesta Festival as well, which is absolutely amazing. Very good report on that mayor, it was a great night. Entertainment was amazing, we had a bit of a sing along, um, in the kids section. And, um, I just, yeah, just like to comment on how heartfelt it was for the dinner at government, the governor's house. Um, and how amazing our community was representing Wyla as well. A very good night.
Thank you deputy mayor. Uh, councillor Knox.
I'm happy to move the recommendation, but in, in doing so, I'd ask that we get a written report from the state dinner. But interesting to know who was on each table and what were the topics discussed, et cetera. It would be really good for council to know those sort of things, but I'm happy to move it.
Thank you councillor. Uh, do I have a seconder please? Uh, deputy mayor Pond, sorry. I'll put the motion, those in favour? Against? Carrie, thank you. Item fifteen point two, city infrastructure, fifteen point two point one, the monthly information report, another very extensive report there. Before I call for a mover and seconder, does anybody have any questions or comments? We will refer them, councillor Simpson.
Couple of questions, well, yeah, a couple of questions. One that might not be answered, if we get inquiries by our, our app or local services app, do we, do we acknowledge those questions or those requests? I know it might be a time which you have, but do we?
And I'll take that on notice from a confirmation point of view, but certainly when a customer request comes in through the My Local Services app, it does gets translated into our customer request system. So there should be a feedback loop coming through, I will double check and confirm that for you.
Okay, and the second bit is, if I put a, a My Services app request in, what's the timeframe for that to be looked at or do we, you know, acknowledge?
Um, that's a great question, thank you. We are currently working on, um, uh, updating our customer experience framework to ensure that we are actually setting some targets and some measures in place for response patterns through, uh, to requests that come in through the different sources. Um, so I don't have the specifics in that at the moment, but I can guarantee that that is something that's being worked on and we'll bring that back to council once we've actually got some recommendations.
Thank you councillor. Uh, councillor Border.
Yes, just on page three seventy-six, the wireless sleep out, uh, that Mission Australia are working on and just wanted to point it out to everybody. Um, it's on the twentieth of September and it's calling on local businesses, professionals and community groups. The whole purpose is to give people that are participating an experience of what it's like to be sleeping rough. Um, there's a lot of, um, underrepresentation with couch surfing. And so it's, I just wanted to highlight the importance of that event with all sections of the community being affected by it in different ways. But it's, it's a really good opportunity to either support the people that are going to participate. It's like Wyla's version of the St Vinnie's CEO sleep out, I think it could be, um, a challenging and confronting experience, but it could also be a lot of fun. So whether or not people are participating in it, they might want to get, um, behind somebody to support it as well.
Thank you councillor.
And it's on the Twitter.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Knox?
Couple of months ago, I had occasion to, um, ring council after hours and got through the call centre. And I have to say, I wasn't particularly impressed with the service that I got. I just wondered whether council does any testing, any cold calling at the call centre to make sure it's working as we expect it to work?
Um, uh, no, I will double check with Sue whether, uh, whether she's aware. My, um, my understanding is no, we don't have a program of cold calling into the customers, uh, into the after hours, uh, My, my understanding is no, we don't have a programme of cold calling into the customers, into the after hours call centre to double check how things are working. What I am aware of though, is that the instructions that are given to the call centre have recently, very recently been reviewed. We did find that particularly in terms of animal management and regulatory services, that there were some of the standardised responses that we provided to the call centre were very much out of date. And so very recently we have updated those. But Sue, just confirming that we don't do any cold calling, no. So no, we don't.
Might be worth trying.
Okay.
The other thing is, I've just wanted to mention this on page 376 in the Unearth Festival, there's a mention of War of the Worlds. I attended that and I have to say, and I've seen a lot of bands play in Wyla over the years, probably one of the best concerts I've ever been to in Wyla. It was absolutely fantastic.
Certainly can cover that councillor. deputy Mayor Pond.
I just wanted to comment again on the My Services app and good to hear that we're going to get some information on that because I think it would be a good investigation line to go down and just investigate a bit more. I would like to say it's amazing to see how many of those reports are dealt with in a speedy fashion. Those numbers are huge and it just shows that council are acting. So that's fantastic to see. And the other comment I have is how active our community team are out in the community. There are a number of events on there, they just, they just happen to be everywhere. So I love these reports, it shows where our money is going and how active everyone is and loves the community as much as us. And I'm happy to move that.
Well, just following you there, deputy mayor, I think the number of requests we get through, I think we're doing a fairly good job. Unfortunately, there's always some of those that slip through the loopholes. And I'm confident that we're gradually getting on top of those, so, yep, thank you. Right, we have councillor Border.
Thank you, mayor, deputy Mayor Pond moved it, but I'm happy to second it. But before I do that, I just wanted to make one other point, that there was an increase in requests for payment extensions on rates. I can't remember exactly what page, I think it was 362 or 363. But I just wanted to highlight that because it's wonderful, it's not wonderful to see that. But contrary, I guess to councillor Knox's point earlier, just to balance that of maybe we should raise the rates. I think it's important just to consider as we would the whole, the whole picture. But also to see the effort that we're going to now with building rationalisation, taking on board the ESCOSA advice, the Order and Risk Committee's guidance as well, to really bring in anything that we possibly can. I think that's a really important point to make. Thank you, and I'll second that as well.
Thank you councillor. So we have a motion, move and second. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against, carried, thank you. Item 16, notices of motion, do we have nil? Item 17, questions on notice, there are nil. Item 18, questions without notice, do we have any questions without notice? councillor Knox.
I've got three, and they'll be very quick ones. First one is the blast furnace, any update on accessing more twigs, et cetera?
The update, oh, so I can throw something, the update I had on Thursday night was that they were up to eight. Very optimistic, but in his tone, very slow going. So at that stage, they were up to eight, but it was very slow. But they were moving forward, but it was not going back.
The other thing that I wanted to mention was the partnership we have with Business SA. I think Justin mentioned a while back that we weren't really happy with the way things were going, we were going to rejig it. I'm just wondering what's happened and are we starting to get more benefit for our money?
Thank you for the question councillor. So the Business SA partnership has come to an end, so that's sort of a two year period and that period has now expired. There have been a couple of discussions with the Wyla Business and Tourism and Business SA to talk about re-energising that partnership. But nothing's come to fruition just yet. And the key resource that we've been working with at Business SA has just secured a job with another entity. So I'll have to find out now who will be picking up that in his absence. So it might take a little while just to get that one back on track.
Thank you. The final one is, I can't remember what the name of it was, but it was back in Robin Dunstall's time that we entered into an arrangement to become a member of a cooperative research centre. I'm just wondering whether we are still members of that and if we are, how much we are paying? And if we are paying, are we getting any benefit?
Yeah. So I think that is making probably reference to the HILT CRC, so Heavy Industry Low Carbon Transition Cooperative Research Centre. We're an affiliate member, so we are a member of HILT CRC. I don't think we make any financial contribution, I think our contribution is in kind. I think maybe the first year was 5,000, but since then, there's been no financial contribution. In terms of value from a membership, it's hard to quantify the, the actual value because a lot of it's intangible in terms of being able to access informations, forums, briefing sessions and the like, which are happening all the time. And, you know, and the networking that comes from that. We know that the HILT CRC are actively looking at potentially having some resources placed in region in conjunction with University of SA to assist with the sort of the debt transition, transition. And we have continued to beat the drum that we want HILT CRC to have an actual presence in Wyla. So I think we're getting closer to that. So as I said, it's hard to quantify the actual value, but it's now all in kind. So I think we're certainly getting value from our membership in that context.
Thank you councillor. councillor Border.
Yes, just a quick question, following on from your point about the mayor issues that they're talking about across the air peninsula with youth and some behaviour challenges, the water issue at Port Lincoln, the federal funding. I just wonder whether it might be worth a discussion with the media team to do a release so that the people of Wyla can see that these issues that we're navigating through locally, that we aren't alone and that there are potentially bigger issues elsewhere. I think a lot of the time, some people in the communities only, only see the local issue and they think that that's the biggest problem in the world. And so I just wondered whether it might be worth the media team doing some sort of release to provide that broader context for the community to be able to appreciate what we're, what we're navigating through at the moment.
Certainly take that on board, look at it, because I know from a Spencer Gulf cities point of view, both the other cities have similar issues. Thank you councillor. Any further questions without notice? Item 19, any motions without notice? No, thank you. At that juncture, would somebody care to move that we adjourn the meeting? Moved deputy mayor Pond, seconded councillor Campbell. And we will adjourn for 15 minutes, which will be close enough to quarter to seven when we're back. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against, carried, thank you. Item 20, 20.1, corporate services, 20.1.1, unsolicited proposal, purchase of Crown land. Refer to finance manager and knowledge, I'll get it right one day.
All right, so before we start, shouldn't you have the recommendation?
Sorry.
Happy to move it?
Yeah, yeah, I've just reconvened the meeting. councillor Border, seconded councillor Knox.
No, I moved it.
Other way around.
The other way around.
Knox Border. Other way around? Okay, move councillor Knox, seconded councillor Border, we're going to Conforit. Thank you. And at five minutes past seven, I'll declare the meeting closed. And thank you for your attendance, but don't go away.